Evening and welcome to the meeting. At this time, I'll open the meeting to the public. The public may address the board of any topic at this time. It could also be another chance near the end of the meeting. Anyone wishing to just work, yes sir.
Ron Bonk, CRN News. Mr. Mayor, a while ago, and I'm not expert in history, but there was talk of health concerns of residents and a possible class action suit against the village for health concerns. And lately, this has come to light again, possibly in terms of individual lawsuits. And I'd like to know what the village's protection limits are for various lawsuits that in fact, the plaintiffs would win these theoretical cases.
I'm unaware of any lawsuits pending in front of the village.
I just said there's talk of possible lawsuits. I just want to know how, what level of protection that we have? Is there a cap on the amount of damages that our insurance carrier would cover? And if they cap that, we go over, what would happen?
Well, what's our catastrophic cap? Our son, is it two million or one million? I think it's up in that range. But, there's all kinds of restrictions on that. With suing a municipality and they have to, you have to do the, what is it? Article forty-two or something, this is coming off the top of my head here. You have to be notified in advance of whatever it was.
Well, say if it was a high sidewalk and somebody tripped on it. So if you didn't go back and fix it and you left it there and somebody tripped again, then you're liable for a lawsuit.
Or if somebody notified you that there was a danger and you didn't fix it. And you have to have prior notification.
Well, this thing, we're just talking about Pfizer operations and demolition, which is all, for years been permitted by the village, so I don't understand that.
The other thing is too, I'll give you this example. We have an insurance policy right now that has full replacement value. So we had a loss with one of our dugouts out here. Full replacement value. So we put in a claim for it and minus the deductible, they're still not going to give us anything, or they don't want to. Forty-eight hundred dollars and take twenty-five hundred off, you'd think the rest would be ours and they don't calculate it that way. So, in answer to your question, I don't know.
So is the village at risk if this were to be happened? And the village lawsuits, possible lawsuits?
Well, it would have to be something that we created on our property.
No, it, we've always had to sue for environmental issues many times, so this is not nothing new. I'm just concerned about-
Well, it's new to me because I haven't heard of it. But the point is, if it's something the village created on village property, village man, but there's got to be a linkage to the village before you can sue. I mean, you can sue anybody for any-
I'm not, I'm not making luxury, but I bet you a good lawyers would be able to make a case. I'm just questioning how much insurance coverage we have and would they actually protect, you know, would our insurance carrier protect us in this particular type of scenario? Has that question been asked to our insurance carrier?
As far as I know, we've never been sued before for something like that. So, I don't know. I guess, I've never heard of a lawsuit on the village.
We can check into it. We can check in with our insurance company.
Oh, that would be great, Trustee Menard, if you could get it. Just so we could say that we are protected to a certain limit or just because it would possibly fall on the taxpayers, homeowners, and that would certainly be a concern.
Okay, yeah, we'll check in with our insurance company.
Anybody else? Okay, no chats later on again. Minutes from previous meeting, May sixth and May thirteenth. Are there any errors and omissions, any corrections anyone would like to make? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve documents.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bills, our son?
We have one addition this evening, it's the Shazzy Hardware. It's for seven dollars and twenty cents for some SJ wire.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments regarding the bills? I make a motion the bill to be paid?
Second.
Okay, the bills to be paid as amended.
As amended. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Is there any correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
All right. Reports to Mayor, okay. First, there's discussion on the RFPs, the water plant study, request for proposals. We have received two. We've reached out to several different companies that declined to submit. They said it was beyond their scope or they don't do it anymore. I think we, I think we asked after we didn't get any more requests. I think we asked three or four different engineering companies in two states. So, what I would like to do here is we have the two that are submitted. And I'm, I'm going to read them over. The administrator's going to read them over. And I asked all the board to look them over. And if any, I'd like one person on the board to work with the two of us on this. Tom, would you like to do this? I'd appreciate it if you were. Okay.
Because the way the two specifics are, you know, you can, you can look at them, you can see similar language, but they're apples and oranges. And their price also shows apples and oranges too.
Yes, he was excluding in the first one.
Well, okay, so how about we do that? I'll have a committee this, this week with the administrator, the mayor, and Trustee Dard. And we'll go over this. And in the meantime, like the rest of the board members to look it over and come up with any input that they have on this and get back to us. And hopefully, do you think we could hit for Friday? Is that too short? You're not here Friday?
That you've still been here.
Yeah. Well, what I was saying is if we could come to a conclusion on which one to award, we can have a special meeting on Friday and vote to make the award so we can get this thing going. I think, Mr., would you like to be on that Friday?
With that?
On these projects?
No.
You sure? Okay, let's aim it for Friday.
To your convenience.
Let's see, let's dig into it starting tomorrow. And then we'll see how we're coming along. Let Don coordinate because she's in the office. And then if we can get together maybe like Wednesday or Thursday, if we've got enough there and if we feel confident that we can make a good, a good recommendation to the rest of the board, we'll call a meeting on Friday. And have the deputy clerk hold the meeting if you're not here. And we'll make the award and get this thing going. Does it sound good to everybody?
So it's a holiday weekend.
What?
People on Friday.
Actually, thank you. Coming up this Friday. This Friday is not a holiday? No.
No. So it's Friday next Friday.
Well, coming up, like in four days. Right? All we're doing is not anything else. It's just to award this, get it going, and we can really- Okay, second thing, need to review the procurement policy. And we've had this before, everyone knows what's in it. All it is, it amends the, some changes in the, in the village employees that are- village employees that are authorized to sign purchase orders. See that page four? And it just reflects the changes in personnel that occurred over the last, well, since last year. So, is there any discussion on this? Okay, if not, need a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion to approve the procurement policy amendments.
Second.
Second by Trustee Menard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got a clean energy communities grant. And we've received the five thousand dollars for it. Okay, so I guess the question is, that we need to ask is, what are we going to spend the five thousand dollars on energy related? And what the suggestion was, was five thousand dollars worth of LED streetlight bulbs. So, I think they're going to get a couple different kinds to meet the different- I think we're using like two different light bulbs, right? Ryan?
For?
Streetlights.
All aluminum ones are a standard light now?
Right, and all the other ones have the other size.
Right.
So you're going to get whatever. I, I mean, I don't, I don't plan to dictate to them what they need to buy for- What is it, about fifty lights or so?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two lights for five thousand?
Twenty-two fixtures to go on aluminum poles if you go that route. The ones that were downtown that were replaced, I don't think if those were the lights that we were, that we looked at when we- I'm not really happy with them myself. I think the board needs to take a look at them when they go home tonight and see if you're happy with them.
No, pretty definitely.
I think they show up more than what they show out.
Didn't you have two different ones last summer? Two different wires, the other one?
There were two different wattages.
Oh.
And we went with the lower wattage one because it shined, we couldn't tell the difference. These lights, it looks like they are a whole different unit than what we tried.
Are they less expensive than the aluminum ones or?
Yes, they're about a hundred dollars a piece, those lights. Hundred fifteen a piece.
Okay, well, listen, what I think we should do, I don't think we need a motion on this per se, but I think we should just- The money's in the electric department fund. They know what kind of lights they need to buy that are, that have to be energy-saving light bulbs. And just figure out what the ratio you have, what you want to get and just spend it on that. I don't think we need to get into-
If you're not happy with the ones you got, Ryan, try some different.
Well, I just, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at them at a different, I don't know, maybe it was because of fall or winter, but if you look at them, I, I'm not really satisfied with them.
They're not, they're not that bright.
Really? And it seems like when I looked at them, they seem to be pointing the light up rather than out.
Out.
For some reason. They're almost like a spot rather than-
Like a spotlight, doesn't it?
Like a flood. So I'd like to do a little research on them before we purchase any more and figure out what's the best thing for our box.
The money's, our son has the money now, so take your time. You know, you've got enough light bulbs on hand to do whatever you need to do. In the future, okay. Because we did buy a bunch and this year's budget will come up June first. We get, we usually buy, whatever we buy, half comes out of IEP and half comes out of the electric fund, so that's what we do every year. So, anyway, okay. Now, the other thing, when we got you on the hot seat here, Ryan, is we did the bid openings for the substation transformer maintenance. They were open May sixteenth. We had three submissions. Rest of power service, no deviations, sixty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. SD Myers, no deviations, total seventy-one thousand five hundred and sixty. And TSI, which had deviations, was twenty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five. Now, they were sent to our electrical engineer for review and recommendations, Kurt Wilson. And I, have we heard back from him yet or?
Yes, he sent the report today.
What is his recommendation and your recommendation?
Okay, what the recommendation is, we go with TSI because there is some exceptions to the deviations, but they all have. Because what they're saying is that when they get in there, if they see worn parts, it costs extra to get it changed. If the mint, if the oil is too contaminated and they can't filter press it, then you have to buy new oil.
And pay for disposal of the old.
So that's additional cost. So, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars for this project. What we want to do is we want to look at the three transformers and we want to have a point to go forward on what has to be repaired and what has, where we are at on where parts. So with TSI, they're willing to come in and do the general, open them up, clean up the oil, give us a recommendation. And there is additional cost if they have to do any work. For instance, like TSI, it says if they have to take and dehydrate the oil, take the water out of the oil, it's an additional sixty-two fifty. That's, that, that's where the additions are on the exceptions. So, I talked to Kurt Wilson on Friday and I talked to McGinn today. And we're both on the same page. Because we like to go with the TSI and we can get the general scope of the work done, but we would like to get approved of the whole amount in the budget this year. So if there is worn parts at our discretion, we can say, yes, repair this one. Or if one is too worn out, we can say, close it up, seal it for the winter, then next spring, we'll go back to that one transformer rather than doing all the maintenance of the substation.
But you think it's a pretty good chance we'll have a total of three good ones when this is done, minimum?
Minimum, yes.
Because one of them doesn't need any work and then we can get the other two.
The H. C. Porter was rebuilt probably less than eight years ago. And that's in very good shape. The Waka Shaw is very minimum. It's the two older GEs that were put in nineteen ninety-two. I mean, they've been, they've been there, they've been exercised because of Wyeth and Ken Pilot. I mean, it used to feed parts of that development. But like I said, if the oil is, if they can't clean the oil up, it's, it's twenty dollars a gallon for the oil. So that's an additional cost. So the other two companies are the same. One came in at sixty-one thousand eight hundred and one came in at seventy-one thousand five hundred and sixty. Now, they're saying that if there's additional cost, that cost is going to elevate. If there's worn parts, if they have to use their oil. So, that could go up into the hundred thousands. Where with TSI, we feel like that we're comfortable staying around the fifty thousand dollar mark, which we budgeted for.
Well, at the very least, you've got twenty-three thousand dollars to-
For parts, oil, whatever. But they have to come to us, myself and Kurt Wilson, to do any improvements or any additions to these bills.
You have to approve.
We have to approve that that work- They have to prove to us that those parts are wore out. And they have to physically show us. And with all these, these contracts, what their biggest problem is, they don't want to have to come here, set up, work on a transformer, wait a week and come back. When they're in there, we're obligated to be with them until all three transformers are done. Because every time they break down and set up, it's an additional one thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. So we don't, you know, we want to stay there and get this cleaned and get that substation right up to a good point where when we do our testing twice a year, we'll be able to do a show what the conditions of those transformers are.
All right.
So I can give you a brief, you know, an idea of what's going on.
So they take the tap changers and all that and the oils in them and the gas analysis and-
There's two tanks. There's the main tank of the transformer and there's called a tap changer, which regulates as the village uses more power, it changes the taps, it changes the different settings in the transformer to increase the power as you need it through the distribution of the village. So they're going to go into the main tank and the main tanks aren't bad. There's a little bit of water in them. We think we can just clean those up. Where, where the tap changers is because there's wearing parts. There's mechanisms that go back and forth. That arc can make different. So that's where they're going to concentrate and get them fixed. And if one of the GEs is so bad that if we need a lot of parts for the tap changer, we're just going to mockball that. And we're going to do a scope of the project next June to do that one transformer. And not only that-
Separately budget this one.
Separately budgeted that one tap changer. And, and I mean, these transformers are anywheres from five hundred to a million dollars a piece now. So, we, we need to take care of them.
Right. Okay, motion from Trustee Arnold.
I make a motion to-
Ward the TSI.
Ward the TSI the bill for the-
Substation.
Substation transformer.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the bids awarded the TSI for twenty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And also, authorizing the electric supervisor, which is Superintendent Pelkey, to sign purchase orders for this up to a total of fifty thousand dollars because that's already in the budget. We already voted on that, so he's got almost twenty-three thousand dollars. Now, if it looks like they're going to need more than that, calls right away because-
I will come back to the board.
But don't wait like two weeks so they shut down and have to, you know, pay the-
Right, if there's like a five thousand dollar difference as it gets closer, I'll come back and see.
Right.
If we can finish the job for five thousand dollars this year-
And take it on something else.
Right. I mean, there is money in the substation account for repairs also.
Right.
Repair.
Okay.
We'll keep you updated. When do you plan on starting this? Once they award the bid, they'll give me a date to come on.
Okay. And they'll be notified tomorrow, I would imagine. Next thing I have is the- We have a new, we have to adjust the salary for new hire to keep in accordance with New York State minimum wage, which is eleven dollars and ten cents an hour. So we need a motion to raise entry level positions, I guess, across the board. I don't know if any of them are really affected, but one anyway is. We had the motion because it's in the contract and the budget and everything, but we have to raise it to what the state law says. So we need to raise, we need a motion to raise our new hire to eleven dollars and ten cents an hour.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, a resolution, twenty nineteen dash twenty-three is a budget modification. A lot of this represents moving some money around in the fire department to pay for an unexpected or unanticipated major repair they had to do on one of the trucks. So Fire Chief put this all together and came up with it. So we're going to, we have a variety of small accounts here, or different account numbers. And we're basically going to increase the appropriation fund balance by fifty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars and increase the appropriations from the fund balance to fifty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-three. And then the capital water project, we're going to increase by six thousand dollars. And then the library capital projects, we're in, we're increasing thirteen thousand seven hundred and five dollars. And, and that's coming from the fund balance. So, are there any questions from this, about this? Do you need any more detail to it than what you have in front of you? Sorry, this man can fill you in more if you want. All right. I need a motion to approve this budget modification.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget modification.
Okay, pause second. Okay, we need a roll call vote. Trustee Arnold, aye. Trustee Dard, aye. Trustee Menard, aye. Trustee Gadway, aye. The mayor votes aye. Okay, then, the last meeting that came up, there was a question about assessments in the village. So I did some research on this. I've taken notes on it. I talked to the, I talked to Mrs. Gagnon today on the phone and, and the administrator called her also earlier in the week. There are nine hundred and sixty-two total parcels in the village. Four hundred and sixty parcels were changed and most of them were increased. The four or five that were decreased were mostly on the Pfizer property. The last assessment in the village was done, village-wide, was done in two thousand thirteen. The Pfizer property was assessed at fourteen million nine hundred and forty-six thousand and it is now one million two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred. The total village assessment is down six million four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Now, the reason that they gave me for this, which I don't really agree with, but it's, it's what happened was the state changed the guidelines from a three-year average to a one-year sales. So if you have a spike in sales, your rates for everybody's going to go up. If it averages out over three years, you get a more realistic picture. Now, what the fellow that does this for Mrs. Gagnon explained to me was that we're under the three-year parcel for fifteen, two thousand fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. They overlap like, they were like fiscal years or something. So it was like half one year and half the next year, over three years. We're at ninety-five percent assessment. In other words, we, we had the village assessed at ninety-five percent of its value. Supposed to be a hundred percent, but we're up to ninety.
I thought back in thirteen that they did assess us at a hundred percent.
They did. But since then, according to him, since like fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, or eighteen, it was ninety-five percent. So they would have had to adjust it about five percent to get it to come right. When, when Albany changed this, it turned the calculation down to eighty-eight percent. So to make up the eighty-eight percent, to bring it up to a hundred percent, they had to raise twelve percent more revenue out of the assessments. I don't know if that makes exact sense. It didn't make a lot of sense to me. It just sounded like somebody came up with an arbitrary matrix for this in Albany and told all the counties they had to do this.
There's no rhyme or reason of how the hurting people, as you first identified, what is it, less than half the parcel got an increase?
About half.
About half, right.
Nine sixty-two and there was four hundred and sixty, so.
I personally got a forty percent increase. Forty, four zero percent.
Well, mine went up.
Well, they're balancing on the backs of my checkbook.
Instead of an eighteen percent.
Well, it was supposed to be twelve percent.
Twelve percent, yeah. Well, if they assessed everybody, it would probably would have been to like a-
Well, no, they didn't, they didn't-
No, no, I'm saying if they would have, they'd bring it up to that.
No, they did assess everybody. It's just they changed four hundred and sixty of them. In other words, like some of them, like for instance, a house might have just sold last year. Well, okay, that's what it's worth. So they didn't change the value of it all. But-
Well, we didn't have that many houses in the village that changed.
I can't defend-
I know, I didn't, I didn't get a raise. I don't know how come, but I didn't get one.
You'll get you next year.
I'll get one.
Well, mine went up, mine went up. I put an addition on my garage.
I'll tell them that and they can take at least twenty percent off mine.
I put an addition on my garage and they charged me double what it cost. So I figured, well, that's about right for the tax assessors because they don't care what the cost of the thing is. They, all they care is about what their table says it is for square footage. But anyway, so, now, a few things about property taxes that people need to know. The county does all the property assessments. We have no role or input in that at all. The village lost its assessment review board in around nineteen ninety-two or ninety-three. Because we had it in ninety-one when I was on the board and when I came back in ninety-four, it was gone. So we used to have one day a year when the village board was the village property tax review board, assessment review board. So people would come- People would come in here and they grieve it and we usually gave it to them. And then, so then they'd have to defend the school. We'd have to defend the town and the county why their assessment was more than ours. So maybe that's why they did away with it, but you know, that's the way we did it. The village board no longer hears. We have no legal right or obligation to do that. So, the other half of the tax calculation is you have your assessed value and that goes up every year, maybe goes down, but usually goes up. And you have your tax rate. And that rate is how much per thousand? Ours is currently three dollars and ninety-nine cents per thousand. So if you had a hundred thousand dollar house, your taxes would be three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Now, we've lowered the taxes in this village twelve percent over the past two years. And the funny thing is, well, we are going to feel it because the overall thing went down because of the Pfizer plan. But, the rest of it went up so much that instead of going down on Pfizer, it went down about thirteen million. But they made up a bunch of that with the rest of us. Now, I don't think they did it, they didn't do it for that reason. They didn't do it to say, well, we got to make up for this. That's just what when they, when they reassessed everybody after six years. And I asked them, I says, why don't you do it every year? You know, keep track. And I, I think they do, like with the, the building permits. It's one of the purposes of them is to put the, whatever you did to see if it's assessable and increase your assessment. So, if your taxes go up, you can complain to the taxing jurisdictions. The county, the town and the school and ask them why they didn't lower your rate. Or you can, you can set, you can grieve your assessment to the county and ask them why they think your house is worth more than you think it's worth. But those are the two avenues that you have. And I think it's overlooked a lot on the taxing jurisdiction, why they continually raise so much every year even when they have years of windfall revenues. And like I say, ours went down because we, we saved a lot of money on services that we don't, that we no longer provide. Anyway, that's what I have on that. Now, that's all for me. Trustee Arnold? Trustee Arnold? Okay, I just wanted to ask Sergeant about, uh, money for that dugout. Do you think we're gonna get any money from the insurance company, or do you know?
I'm not even involved in that part of it.
Oh, okay, all right. So, Don, Don and.
What I like to discuss is.
Tom had been talking to the insurance company, I believe.
Okay, what I like to discuss is how we're gonna do this, so everybody's on board with this dugout. How much money are we gonna spend on this? If you're changing the roof style and everything, and then you're gonna put tin on it, you're gonna have to use a different tin or whatever, because you're gonna change the roof style. Then you're gonna put siding, or not siding, you're gonna put the. Tungy groove boarding, you stop. And that's gonna cost money. You're gonna have, you're gonna have to change the roof rafters, build, uh, rafters for the salt, uh, salt barn, uh, look on it.
Well, it's a good question, fair question. We have four dugouts. Two of them were built like the one that blew down, and it blew down because the bottom was rotted out of it. It was, uh, it used poor quality materials, OSB board for exterior siding instead of something more weatherproof and more attractive. But I'm sure that when they built it, they were trying to keep it under a certain amount of money and do as cheap as they could. What I suggested was, we looked at this thing, it was evaluated, it was valued by the insurance appraisers as forty-eight hundred and eleven dollars. That's what they said it was worth, that's what it cost. It blew down the wind. The other one's gonna blow down too, because it's built the same time, the same construction, and I'm sure that it's ready to go. So my idea was, let's put together a real nice one that's done with quality materials, uh, a better architectural look to it, and have something that we can be proud of to match the rest of the facilities. We gradually upgrade everything else around here. And then we can use that as a model for the next one, for the, for the second dugout. And that can be budgeted specifically a year or two from now, whenever we decide we wanna replace it. So this one's kind of like a, a trial one. So we've had, we've kicked around a couple different ideas of how to build it. And, um, the note that I have here was that, um, we're doing it with volunteer labor. So we're saving the labor costs on it, which would probably be, I'm guessing, a couple thousand dollars in labor, if you hired somebody to do this. Um, the, the, and of course, the pad is still good, so we don't pour concrete. They had two specs. We, we had talked about putting five-quarter by six decking horizontally across the front and for about three feet higher, so, and then followed up with chain link fencing across the face of it. And then, um, let's see, uh, he's got five-quarter by four in here for something, I don't know what that's for. But anyway, so, and the other idea was for the siding on the three, well, the three sides that don't have the, the fence, the chain link fencing on it, would be horizontal V groove, tungy groove. That's what the board said last time. So, of course, we had to put a few more, few more studs in there, because they should be about sixteen inch centers. The bottom plate, of course, should be pressure treated, but the, the vertical ones, I don't think need to be, well, they don't need to be pressure treated because the side of the, uh, the V groove isn't pressure treated. But, so, the V groove, if we do it in pine, it's about six hundred dollars. And if you do it in western red cedar, that's thirteen hundred dollars. All the rest of the cost will be about the same.
So you're figuring on twenty-six hundred dollars, or?
That's, that's one thing, that's one part there. Then, that's one issue is the siding. What, what do you wanna use for materials? Now, the second issue is, the roof that was on there was put on in a way that I think catches wind. It's flat, it's open on the front, and I think the wind got under it, and that's part of what caused it to put so much stress on the bottom. Also, I don't think it's very attractive. The, the, just a flat roof that hangs over the front, hangs over the back. What I'd like to see is a, more of a salt box thing where it's a little short in front, comes down as an awning type thing, and comes off the back, six inches, and off the ends, six inches overhang. And I think to do that, of course, you'd have to build two trusses for it to lay across the top. You'd need, um, probably about six or so trusses, wouldn't you say, Jamie?
Depends how you do, two foot on center, remember, for the trusses, but.
Yeah, okay, so.
How big the building was.
Sixteen, sixteen feet, I think, isn't it? I can't remember.
You'd need nine of them, probably.
Okay, whatever. Trusses, and then reutilize as much as the tin as we can, and there's, there's definitely enough to get like one side of it done, almost. Like across the back or across the front. And since you can't see the two, if the, if one side is a slightly different shade of color, and I don't know what those are, I don't remember if they're, if they're galvanized or if they're colored paint. But get enough to do the other side of it. And then you've got a better looking thing, it's gonna be more substantially built, and, uh, I think.
Could we just add onto the truss up there? I said, could we just add, uh, the front?
Well, there aren't any trusses on it.
Now, there's no trusses on it, it's just a piece of, that's it.
You just put a flat two-by-four thing, I don't even.
Well, I'll tell you what, you go up to the buy house and you look at the one I got up there, that is twelve by eight. And that was forty-two hundred dollars.
The materials? You built it yourself?
Yeah, my son Matt and I built it. So I mean, I mean, we put some, uh, six-by-sixes underneath it that they can set on and stuff. But this one's gonna be set on cement. I mean, all pressure treated and everything like that and everything. But then you put, uh, pine on the side of it, or, or, uh, red cedar, you're gonna have to put a board on the corner, on this corner and this corner, a hot board. To make a look after each end and stuff. So you're talking more money there, so you gotta, so you gotta put red cedar on the side of that. So you're probably talking five thousand dollars to build that dugout. That's sixteen by what, what'd you say it was?
Six, I think.
Six?
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's six feet wide, and I think it's, Brian, do you know if that's sixteen feet long?
Yeah, probably eight by sixteen.
I think it's six, I think we measured it six across the end because it's got one door and a little piece there.
So, well, I was just wondering, do we have enough money in the budget to build that?
Well, we didn't budget it specifically because it came down after the budget was put together.
Yeah, well, we, we wouldn't be able to spend money like this, I mean, you know, to, to build this, I mean.
I think that, I think that we can probably find the money in some of our other projects. We have building funds to repair buildings. I'm still.
Can this be, can this be part of our?
We might be able to.
Whatever for our, no?
Not sure.
For the grant that we have?
We're not sure.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, though, if it costs forty-two hundred dollars, we're gonna, for sure, we're gonna get twenty-three hundred of that back.
Yes, yes, the whole should remember, if we spend five thousand dollars on it, it's gonna last twenty years.
Yeah, and look decent.
You know, and it's gonna look good. So I mean, if you break that down over a twenty-year period of time, you're not talking a whole lot.
Yeah, okay, but I'm just saying, you know.
I mean, if we build something for two thousand dollars.
We ain't talking that twenty-five hundred dollars or, or eight hundred dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, like I say, the, the.
Well, the thing is, I don't want Sergeant to go digging in and around and stuff like that and says, well, oh, we don't have enough money in our budget to do that.
He won't do that.
Well, if they're, I mean, if they're saying that we have, that that other one was forty-eight hundred dollars, and we have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, the most we should spend is twenty-five hundred, they should spend the rest.
Well, if it, if it comes out, it, it's, it was assessed at, it was appraised at forty-eight hundred and eleven dollars.
Because we have replacement costs.
We have twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, we have to spend that no matter what we do. If it was a twenty-five hundred dollar thing, we'd have to spend twenty-five hundred, you know?
Right, right.
And if we do that, if we spend forty-eight eleven or more, we're gonna get twenty-three eleven back. The maximum we can get back if we spend the whole forty-eight eleven on this is twenty-three eleven.
So we have a self-insurance fund, can we?
That was for vehicles, I think. Have to look at how we wrote that, but I think that was for like collision and comprehensive on the vehicles.
So this is an insurance fund, basically, right?
Yeah.
So we take twenty-five hundred out of there to?
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we got money for it, I mean, because you're gonna spend some money on this, you're gonna, you're gonna.
Yeah, anything you build, when you build it, it's gonna cost money.
Right, okay, that's all I wanna know, okay. Second, I have, I'd like the executive session to discuss the employment of a particular, uh, employee.
Okay, need a second?
Need a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Dart?
Do you know what happened with our meeting with Pfizer? It got canceled? And has it been rescheduled or?
It has not been rescheduled.
Okay, and this, and this meeting was purposely for, to discuss what? Can you remind me again, Mr. Mayor?
It was for DEC and pollution stuff.
Right, so my point is, you know, all the while we're not having this meeting is, and they're tearing down it, they're, they're tearing down. When are they gonna give us a meeting after it's all a pile of rubble there? Clock, a lot of inquiries about our village clock, are we gonna replace that, or are we gonna do that?
Yes, I get, I had about ten people ask me about that clock, too.
What we're looking for is that clock is all rotted out, and we can't repair it. I mean, we could repair it, but it'd just be another rotted out situation. What I was hoping was that we could find a company that makes cast iron clocks like that. I've seen them in other communities, you know, new ones, something that would match our old streetlights, for instance. And if we could get that and see what the prices are, and see if we can buy one this year or budget it for next year. But I couldn't find one in time for the budget to put a number in. We tried, but we couldn't get it. We had one, one price from the guy in Canada, wasn't it? And he could've cobbled something together with the one that we had.
Um, it was this, uh, the quote was like six hundred dollars to just, uh, put a new clock face in it, or it was like twenty-three hundred dollars for a whole complete unit, and he'd give you a ten-year guarantee on it. That's from the same company that used to deal with Ben, when you were in the line crew.
My job was ember, they're aluminum, right?
Yeah, they're, uh, they're poured, a poured aluminum.
Poured aluminum.
And the salt really.
Salt eats them right up, yeah.
I like that with the clock, everybody likes the clock.
Oh, yeah, everybody likes the clock.
Everybody likes the clock, it's just a matter of, I think we should try to get a good one that's gonna be more permanent, you know?
Right, right.
So would you like to look into that a little bit?
Oh, I'd like, yeah, sure.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Trustee Menard?
I have nothing for me.
Okay. Trustee Gadway?
I'd like to request executive session to discuss employment history of particular employee.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all I got.
All right. Okay, other reports. Uh, I guess, stuck to you, Brian.
Okay, we're gonna start off with, uh, we had a problem with our south end pump station that everybody knows. We had one of our large pumps fail up there. There's one large pump and two small pumps for the whole south end of the village. When that large pump goes down, it just about cripples us for this time of year, spring, heavy rains, because they're still, we're still getting water from subpumps and whatever. So what we did is we found a company in Vermont, rather than going back to Albany, where we had this pump rebuilt last year. And we had it, uh, we brought, the guy came over and got it, brought it over there, repaired it, and had it back to us within like four days. So we were able to get by. So what I did is I, we're looking at how that pump station is, is plumbed, and unfortunately, we would like to take out the two small pumps and put two large pumps, or at least purchase another large pump to have here. Within two hours, we could have it swapped out. The problem is, is we have our three quotes, and the pump is nineteen thousand dollars.
Well, if you need it, you need it.
It's not a budgeted, uh, item, unfortunately, we didn't know that these pumps are gonna fail. But I talked to Danny Gay and myself, and we come to the conclusion that we recommend that the board looks into, um, purchasing this pump, another pump to have here. And then eventually, I would like to plumb it in so we can use a transfer switch and transfer from one pump to another.
So you just have two pumps.
What's that?
You just have two pumps and two big pumps and get rid of the two little ones.
Possibly. You know, we have to do some calculations and sizing of the equipment that, that runs this place. But at least, if we do keep the two small pumps and the large pump and add another pump, and we would put a transfer switch, so if that large pump fails, we could always switch over to the other large pump and pull it and get it rebuilt or fixed. It was a poor design when they redid the south end pump station. I mean, the pumps used to be above ground, they moved them down to the bottom of the pit. And, uh, I don't think they figured the growth of, uh, all Beacon Heights and all the other developments up there. You know, the Smith Street continued all the way to the end.
If you don't have that pump in there, the south end is gonna get flooded out.
Yes, then you're talking.
You're talking to big money, you're gonna have some lawsuits there.
We used to have a problem too with all that runoff from the farm fields up there. Would come right, we'd get a big wet season like this, and it would all come somehow and get into the sanitary sewer.
We did a lot of smoke testing last, you know, last few years, and we closed up a lot of open sewers that were up there, and we did some repairs on manholes. But, uh, we do have to go and do a survey and ask the people if they have their subpumps into the village sewer, and we would work with them to get them into the storm drains rather than in the sanitary sewer, so it alleviates the water. But I mean, for a safety net and for an ease of mind for Danny and, I mean, in the village, we do have a fund, a reserve account for the pumps. So if we stay under the twenty thousand dollars, I don't think we have to go out the bid as long as we got the three written quotes. That's more our send to elaborate on.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we take and buy that pump.
One second.
Is motion the second on the floor in the discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Just one last thing, is all the other pump stations that we have, we have spare pumps for. That's the only one that we didn't have a spare pump for.
And that's one of the critical ones.
That's a critical one for the whole south end of the village. That's from the Saxony South, that's what that takes care of.
Do you have an extra small pump, a spare one for the two small ones?
No, no, that's the only pump station that we don't have.
No backups.
No backups. Where all the other ones, the north end, you were there when we repaired, repaired the impeller on that. We have full complete units to replace the north end, the Maple Street, and even at the big, uh, plant. So this will get us a good safety net to take care of, because we'd rather have two big pumps than just the two small ones. Danny spent a lot of time up there running that pump by hand to get us through the weekend that, so we wouldn't flood the people out. It was loud, it was banging, but he, he stayed with it. And he did a good job in, uh, making sure that the south end people didn't flood out. And we got it fixed as soon as possible. We really, I mean, line crew helped unwiring it, Johnny Benard unbolted it, helped the sewer plant guys, we've been busy.
And it's a big pump to hoist up twenty feet up in the hole.
Yes, it's down in a pit, it's twenty foot down.
It must weigh, what, two, three hundred pounds?
All of that.
It's all there.
Oh, yeah, Bobby Clark and I did that, brought the pump down there on our backs.
I believe it.
Yeah, I'm telling you, yeah.
Put a pulley block up on the top. Okay, that was the wastewater. Now we're gonna talk about the electric department. Uh, the electric department for the last four weeks have been lowering the streetlight basins, you know? I have to take them off that because we have our own, we have other critical work that we have to get done. There's transformers that we're replacing, there's some, we have one up in Beacon Heights that they excavated today that's tipping over, that, the base is all deteriorated, and they're gonna finish changing that one tomorrow. So the electric department, our projects are gonna start ramping up with this, uh, substation, uh, rehab project. And also, we're gonna start having, uh, power outages, which people aren't gonna like to hear about. I received all the parts to replace the parts that were, um, defective on the switch that was on State Street. parts that were, um, defective on the switch that was on State Street. So, June first, I would like to have a power outage, if weather permits, from six in the morning until noon. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna energize the new downtown two, and we're gonna shed some load off the downtown one. And we're gonna configure all this so it's, it's more user-friendly for growth, and if there's ever a problem, we can backfeed and eliminate outages. So that's one of the first outages that we're gonna have in June. Um, and that's on a Saturday. Because of Delagars and Power Text Manufacturing, we can't disturb them. The other outages that we're gonna have are gonna be on the south end. Um, some of these south end outages is just, I wanted to switch some load around because at the time when we built it, we didn't have the load that we have now. Those outages would be done on Fridays, because it's gonna affect like Angelo's and the new restaurant. But it's gonna be early morning, so it's gonna affect them on Saturday or it's gonna affect them on Friday. It really doesn't matter. So I really like to get those outages done on Friday, and that, those will be determined as the weather goes and how our work schedule goes.
We usually start down like six o'clock in the morning.
Six in the morning, and usually we're, hopefully we're done by ten. But I'm giving the extra leeway till noon.
So we'll have the appropriate notifications in the paper and stuff for those.
Right. But the first one that we wanna do for sure is June first. If I can get this switch, all the new parts put in it this week or next week, and do all the testing that we wanna do, it's gonna be energized and it will be on the new feeder for everything that is on the downtown that is northwest. It's for growth eventually. So if anything ever develops down by Power Text, we have the, enough capacity to take care of everything that we want to do. The south end is mostly just for maintenance for in the future, because whoever takes over, uh, you know, I wanna make sure that.
So you're just changing switches and stuff, not changing big wires or nothing?
We are taking wires apart. We're taking feeders that are off on the south tube, and we're gonna put them on the south one.
Okay.
The south one does not have a lot of load on it. The south tube goes all the way to the end of Smith Street, and that's, there's, there's quite a bit of load on that.
Right, okay.
So I wanna put more load on the south one just to balance it out.
Balance it out.
So, in the future, it's done. So no one has to worry about that.
Okay.
Um, on our summer projects, just to bring the rest of the board up, up, up to speed, I know, uh, trustee Gadway is new at this. Um, we started projects back years ago when we did, uh, Pearl and White. Um, we went out the bid for curbing, and the contracts came in so high that we ended up buying our own curbing forms and putting in our curbing ourselves cheaper than what we could have a company coming and do it. So what we did is we put the curbing in, we had the streets ground down, and that's where Pearl and Cat, or Pearl and, uh, White came in. And then eventually they did Chapman, and they did a piece of Chapman, and they did, uh, State Street. On this, what our goal was last year was to do the new curbing on Pine and Academy. But our work schedule got changed around, we ended up doing another street. Those streets were abandoned because they wanted to take and redesign some of the streets.
No, that's not correct, Brian. That's not correct. The reason, the reason that those two streets were postponed till this year was because we hadn't got the, the, uh, deal in with the, with the grinding company in the middle of the streets. And by the time we asked them to do it, they were all booked up for the summer and couldn't do either one of those streets. That's why we postponed it by this year.
Right. Well, we weren't going to grind them. We were gonna put new curbings in and have them locked up. That was in the budget. So what we've been doing is any major excavation that we do, like what we're doing on Smith Street, relocating the manholes, anything that we're digging six foot or deep, we usually like to let them settle through the winter, and we're straightening out the sidewalks, because Smith Street was supposed to be paved this year, where Pine and, Pine and Academy were supposed to be done last year. But now we're behind here. But what my concern is, is we're redesigning these two streets, we're patching the curbing, and we're putting these curbing drains in. These curbing drains that are going in are really massive. I cannot guarantee you come spring that, that tarmac around those curbing drains are gonna look like the day when they pull out of this village.
Well, why did you get such big?
That's the design that, that we're, that we were told to do.
We're trying to use the state standard, which is, if you look at it on Champlain Street, the state did it. They put that all in one year. They paved it, they put the drains in, they put the curbs in, and nothing settled.
Oh, do you think they're so massive and stuff like that?
I don't know what they look like. All I know is the cast iron part that goes in the curb and the catch basin drain part there. I don't know what's underneath it.
Oh, did you order them?
I've been told two or three different ways that they were. Jason told me that they would hook on, as I understood it, onto the catch basin that's under there.
Jason, Jason, they.
No, I mean, not Jason, I'm sorry, Adam. Adam.
Well, they unloaded them last Friday, and our backhoe couldn't lift them off the truck.
I didn't, I didn't see them. All I know is what he told me.
When I seen them, I went.
What did them cost?
Half of what was budgeted.
Uh, we, we're gonna have over four thousand dollars in manholes. Right now, just the cement was, uh, thirty-four, three thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars.
What, and you're gonna start from one end to the other to put curbing in?
No.
Why's that? Why's not?
Because most of it's still good. They're gonna cut out the pieces, you know, like thirty or forty feet where it's bad and broken up and cracked, and replace that.
No, 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 that ain't, no. The curbing, the, the curbing that we have ain't gonna match what the curbing that's up there.
Why not?
Because the curbing that we have is rounded, right?
It's a state form, yes.
It's a state form, right. It's rounded, and we, and what, we got up there is square. So how are you gonna match that? That's gonna look like that.
They were made by, with plywood, plywood forms. I just, you know, I don't, I just don't want the board to come to me after and say, why does this street look so terrible?
It's gonna look perfect. It's gonna look better than the ones that were screwed up two years ago.
That's your opinion, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, with, with the curbs six inches higher than the grass and blocking the water from draining into the street, yeah.
But I just want the board to know that come spring, I won't be here, but there'll be a plenty of blame to go around. That seems what usually happens when somebody leaves this place. Past boards, past supervisors always get the blame for something. I just want the board to be unnoticed when we patch these curbings and we put these drains in. If you're not happy with them, I can't say I didn't tell you so.
Well, I love to look at the drain before we put them in. We ain't gonna put something in that's ridiculous and take an arm and leg to take in whatever, dig a hole the, the size of the backhoe to put them in. And not only that, if you're gonna start with curbing, you're gonna start from one end, make it all uniform all the way to the other end. We ain't gonna piecemeal that. That.
And you'll see, and I agree with that, trustee Arno, and I agree with the streets that should be ground down. But unfortunately, in the past, we didn't have the money to grind these streets down. Now we do. So kudos to the board for that. And I agree with grinding the streets down. And it would get the, get the curbings back at a, at the right height. We're trying to adjust these curbens to fit everybody so it looks nice and do the best job we can. Apparently, we didn't do a good enough job on White and Pearl.
No, one of those is good. I forget which one. One of them came out perfect. Adam told me. The other one is.
It was a learning curve for us.
Right.
Well, then it's a learning curve. They know how to do it now.
They know how to do it.
Well, then, they're gonna do it from one end to the other. I can't see piecemealing something that's square and the other part is round. No, I can't see, you know, if, if you got a, a twenty foot piece in the middle that's rounded and the other is part square, and stuff, that ain't gonna look good. So it's gonna start from one end to the other, else we're not doing it.
Even, even so, if you, when you cut it, I mean, with, with the, if frost moves up here, I mean, you're gonna have one that's, you know, I mean, if you got a cut in it, it's gonna move, one, one of them's gonna move one way or the other.
I don't know. All I can say is, just look down Champlain Street. That's the proper way to put curbs and catch basins in. That's the way everybody else does it in places where they start from scratch and they build it from nothing. We converted this village from, from culverts and ditches to catch basins.
Yeah, no, I can see having a catch basin, but I can't see having a catch basin that's gonna kill the guy who tried to put it in and stuff.
And you have, you have to realize that the county has a lot more equipment, a lot more manpower than what he has.
And we're not doing big streets either. Not like we're doing a mile.
Oh, it doesn't make any difference.
We got five catch basins.
Yeah, well, that's two streets.
Five, yeah.
Why, why was that design a catch basin even considered? It was out of the norm.
It's not out of the norm. What we got is out of the norm. You gotta, you gotta.
It was a picture that the mayor brought back from somewhere.
Yeah, that's another.
That's the picture that he brought back.
Yeah, I take a look at that.
Because somebody else has it, that would be not worth it.
What I'm saying is, what's out of the norm is what's in the rest of the village. Why are we changing?
Right. That street has curves. It's one of the, those four streets are some.
So what you gotta do then, you gotta take and make the pipes go into the, here, here's the drain right here. So the pipes are out here, so you gotta bring the pipes in like this, into the drain. That, that's what it looks like to me.
Well, that one's.
That's a heck of a lot more work for somebody to do.
That's a different one. That's not what we ordered.
Well, that was right underneath the curb.
This was.
That's exactly what you ordered.
This was one idea to put the, the manhole behind it so you could clean it out. That's the way these people did it. The point of this was to show how the grass is, the level of, of the ground on the side is higher than the road. It goes in the road. We don't have to have like, they got, they've got, um, concrete here.
Yeah.
We don't have to.
Ours is gonna be all tarmac.
Right, exactly. Ours is supposed to come out here with a grate. That's the ones that he showed me. It's not like that at all. That was one idea.
Well, does that look like them up there?
No.
That, up there is what you see, the barrel. Like I said, we unloaded the barrels Friday, and the backhoe couldn't lift them off.
No, I don't know what you ordered then.
I, I mean, I don't understand why this street has to be re-drained. Trustee Arno, you've been here for how long? Have you ever seen any flooding on Academy and on, uh, Pearl?
None.
Or, uh, on, uh?
On Pine Street? No, no.
I, I just don't understand it.
And the drains are right on the edge of the curbing.
Yeah. I, I just don't understand why you.
You have a spare.
Or you can figure everything.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we have state drains at the end of the road. The state, they're responsible for that water. Let them worry about it. When their manholes are all busted, I call them up and they come fix them.
Well, then don't put it in.
Well, you have a.
Just have the curbs to go down the hill if that's what you need. I don't care.
Why did you budget it?
Because you told me that's what you needed for that street.
No, I did not bring, I was totally against those storm drains, right from day one.